Good evening, welcome to the February ninth regular board of the Canton Township trustees. I'd like to call the meeting to order at six thirty P M. Clerk Segras, can you please take a roll call?
Borninsky.
Good evening, I am here in Canton Township.
Foster.
I'm at my home in Canton Township.
Engoli.
Good evening, I'm at my home in Canton Township.
Graham Hudak.
Good evening, I'm here in Canton Township.
Segras in Canton Township. Slavens.
Good evening, and I'm in Canton Township.
Snyderman.
I am here in Canton Township.
Great, thank you. So our first item is closed session. Can I have a motion to go into closed session?
And supervisor, I move the board go into closed session for the purposes of discussing legal strategies around pending litigation for Marinelli v Canton and Boylan v Canton.
Support.
Great support by, I think Summer and Diane. Great Clerk Segras, can you please take roll call on the motion?
Borninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Engoli.
Hi.
Graham Hudak.
Hi.
Segras, hi. Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Hey, great, thank you. So those who are going to close session, you can go, you can log off and I'll meet you over there. And Jade, I will leave you here for host. I'll stop the recording. We are back in session and can I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
And supervisor, I move that the board go from closed session into open session?
Support.
Thank you Clerk Segras, can you please take the roll?
Borninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Engoli.
Hi.
Graham Hudak.
Hi.
Segras, hi. Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Great, thank you. Now, the next item on here is the adoption of the agenda. We did change item G three. So there was an updated G three which was sent out to the board. So can I have a motion to adopt the agenda with the change of item G three?
And supervisor, I move to the board approve the agenda as presented, well, with the modification of item G three.
Motion supported Clerk Segras, can you please take roll?
Borninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Engoli.
Hi.
Graham Hudak.
Hi.
Segras, hi. Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Thank you, motion approved. Can I hear a motion to approve the minutes for January twenty sixth?
And supervisor, I move that the board approve the minutes from the meeting, January twenty sixth, twenty twenty one.
Right.
Motion supported Clerk Segras, can you please take roll on the motion?
Borninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Engoli.
Hi.
Graham Hudak.
Hi.
Segras, hi. Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Thank you, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have anyone for public comment?
Did we do the minutes?
We did.
We did, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's what we just voted on.
Okay.
We're voting so fast.
Yeah.
Thanks. I don't see any hands, I'm looking for hands. If you're calling in, you can hit star six. I'll raise your hand. I don't see any hands up for public comment. Okay, thank you. So the next item on the agenda is payment of the bills.
Madam Supervisor, I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Support.
Thank you Clerk Segras, can you please take a roll call on the motion?
Borninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Engoli.
Hi.
Graham Hudak.
Hi.
Segras, hi. Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Motion passes. Now we move on to the general calendar. Item G one, would I please hear a motion for item G one, consider adopting tax board of reviews poverty policy and guidelines?
And supervisor, I move that the Canton Township Board of Trustees adopt tax board review poverty policy and guidelines in compliance with Public Act two fifty-three of twenty twenty.
Support.
Thank you. In accordance with section two one one dot seven U of the Michigan compiled laws, Canton Township has offered a partial poverty exemption through the Board of Review to qualified homeowners. Township has historically averaged about ten applicants for this exemption per year. On December twenty third, twenty twenty, Governor signed Public Act two fifty-three which made additional changes to the poverty exemption section. The most significant of these changes was revising the guidelines and calculation of the reduction to the taxable value. A person meets all eligibility requirements and statute, Board of Review must grant a full exception equal to one hundred percent reduction in taxable value or a partial exemption equal to twenty-five percent or fifty percent reduction in taxable value or any other percentage reduction in taxable value approved by the S T C. Additionally, the state adopted an application for use and applying for poverty exemption. Other changes exclude the board's ability to deviate from the policy and guidelines for extraordinary circumstances. Upon review of pass board review actions, reductions in taxable value have averaged close to fifty percent for qualifying applicants. The recommended policy adopts that stance. The accompanying accompanying policy application and guidelines are in compliance with P A two fifty-three of twenty twenty. We do have Aaron Powers. Let me see, I can, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Powers? Or anybody else?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead Stephen.
Um. Hi Aaron.
Hello.
Hello, um. So past, the last paragraph here says that upon past review of past board of review actions, reductions in tactical taxable value have averaged close to fifty percent. Is that referring to reductions that we've taken since this act? Or were we doing this even before this act?
Yes, Canton Township, like every Michigan municipality, has been administering the priority exemption policy of the General Property Tax Act. And the legislation has recently changed. So we are recommending a policy that very much mimics what was in existence before. And we had researched previously what the border review reductions have been. And in the last three to five years, we've had about ten applicants and those applicants that have qualified for the poverty exemption have equated to about a fifty percent reduction in their taxable value.
Do you, thank you, do you think these changes will make it more likely or make it less likely that we'll approve these in the future? Like the changes, did they make it more likely?
The changes themselves, so an applicant has to meet an asset test and have an income test. And we're not really changing significantly the asset of the income test. What the legislation has done is simply kind of limited the border reviews authority in regards to what resulting reduction in taxable value can be granted, and this accounts for that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you. I was just wondering, we had just appointed some new members to the tax board of review. And so I'm just wondering if they have been trained and are up to speed on this. In fact, since the Public Act changed everything a little bit, just making sure that everyone on the tax board of review is up to speed on this latest legislation.
Yes, we'll be sharing, we'll be sharing this information with the board of review at the organizational meeting, which will be the first meeting of the March Board of Review. Once it's adopted by, once a policy is adopted by the township board, then we'll be sharing with them the policy and guidelines which will be subject to following.
Okay, thank you.
Diane.
I just have a real quick question and something just came up. I did get something from the Michigan Tax Tribunal, but it will be for the twenty twenty and they get a hundred percent reduction. So if by chance this happens, I know this is the first time I've ever seen this happen before, but if it happens for twenty twenty-one and they agree to a hundred percent, would they, would that trump our policy of the fifty percent?
Yes, the tribunal has authority over all matters after the board of review has adjudicated them. So the tribunal will ultimately have authority. So if they it'll I don't think that the tribunal would have a reason to differ from our policy in the future because of the new legislation. But for whatever reason, if they chose to, they would have the ability and the authority to do so.
Okay, it just, I'd never seen that before. And so that's why I was curious. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya.
Yeah, so I, so first of all, is this the first time this type of exemption have been given up to fifty percent? Or has it been done in the past? And a follow-up is, this is for the year twenty twenty-one? And are we expecting any override of this from the state level, say, for example, state signs and other law that says from fifty to seventy-five percent? Will that override the decision the township makes or how does it work? I was trying to understand this.
Sure. So yes, we've always had, all municipalities have had a opportunity to be able to provide tax relief to individuals when they qualify for a poverty exemption. And Canton Township's always, like all municipalities, been able to do so. What we're doing with establishment of this policy for twenty twenty-one is before we would take into consideration numerous items relative to the petitioner's income, their expenses, and calculate a reduction in taxable value based off of our previous policy. The state has now disallowed that in a simple fashion where they've simplified it. They only allow municipalities to grant a hundred percent, fifty percent, or twenty-five percent. And the recommendation before the board this evening is based off of what has typically been our policy. And upon review and analysis of our, of our previous last three to five years, we only get about ten applicants per year, but they've equaled or averaged about a fifty percent reduction. So that would be if adopted by the board, the policy moving forward. Ultimately, of course, all assessments have the ability to be challenged and moved along in the court system either to the tax tribunal or Court of Appeals and such. So there certainly would be the possibility of this being overridden by a court of competent jurisdiction, but that's very unlikely and a rarity at all ever.
Very great, thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you, Mr. Powers. Okay Clerk Segras, can you please take a roll call on the motion?
Borninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Engoli.
Hi.
Graham Hudak.
Hi.
Segras, hi. Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Thank you. Okay, item G two, thank you, Mr. Aaron. All right. Oops, okay, so the next item is item G two. Can I please hear a motion for consider reappointments to Canton Cares Advisory Committee?
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to reappoint four members to the Canton Cares Advisory Committee. Laura Martye, Tammy Brown with terms expiring eleven seventeen twenty-two. Tammy Hagerty, Christina Wilson with terms expiring eleven seventeen twenty-three.
Support.
Thank you. So Canton Township sponsors a number of events throughout the year benefiting seniors, veterans, youth, the handicapped, and township employees. However, the township is limited in the financial contribution it can make. Generous business and individuals have always contributed their time, money, and goods. However, donations to the township are not taxed deductible for the donor. As a way to encourage more donations, former supervisor Pat Williams partnered with the Canton Community Foundation to create a fund that accepts tax deductible donations to help defray the costs of various township sponsored programs. The fund is known as the Canton Cares Fund and is managed by an advisory committee made up of township residents and business owners. The initial advisory committee was appointed on November seventeenth, two thousand seventeen by the Canton Township Board of Trustees. The initial terms were staggered with the intention of having three-year terms upon reappointment. Jessica Bunjek, one-year initial term expiring eleven seventeen eighteen. Laura Martye, two-years initial term expiration eleven seventeen nineteen. Kim Scartelli, two-years initial term expiration eleven seventeen nineteen. Nadia Mecklen, three-years initial term expiration eleven seventeen twenty. And Christina Wilson, three-years initial term expiration eleven seventeen twenty. The bylaws of this fund state that all appointments and reappointments are made by the board of trustees. Reappointments were not brought to the board for approval upon the initial term expiration dates. In addition, two new committee members were appointed within the last three years to fill the vacancy of Nadia Mecklen and Kim Scartelli, who stated they were not able to continue. The previous supervisor appointed Tammy Hagerty and Tammy Brown to fill the vacancies, which was appropriate because the bylaws allowed the supervisor to appoint someone to fill a vacancy. Since reappointments are supposed to go before the board of trustees, the board is being asked to consider reappointing the following members with terms expiring as follows. Laura Martye, term expiration eleven seventeen twenty-two. Tammy Brown, term expiration eleven seventeen twenty-two. Tammy Hagerty, term expiration eleven seventeen twenty-three. And Christina Wilson, term expiration eleven seventeen twenty-three. Jessica Bunjek does not wish to continue leaving one vacancy on the committee. We will solicit for the open position using our application and interview process, and the appointment will come before the board once that process is complete. Just to also let you know, we have asked the committee to make in next month, make a presentation to us on the fund, you know, giving us, who has put money in and taken money out over the last couple of years. Are there any questions? Kate?
Let's go ahead Kate, I couldn't, I couldn't get unmuted. So these terms were up prior to now. And so when we look at the term expirations, we're kind of making catch up because this should have probably come before the board. You know, like the ones that were up in twenty nineteen. They're still having a three-year term that expires in twenty twenty-two. But it just hadn't come before the board at that point. So we're sort of catching up on this. Is that right?
That's right, yes.
All right, thanks.
Yes. Any other questions?
I can, can I just make a statement?
Sure.
This is a nonprofit organization that had bylaws that did not follow those bylaws. The bylaws said that those appointments were supposed to come before the board of trustees and serve on a lumber of nonprofit organizations. And there's actually an act in the Michigan Legislature called the Nonprofit Corporation Act. Following your bylaws isn't just something that you do, but it's nice. It's something that's significantly legally important. There are a number of civil litigation cases where majority, majority members on nonprofit organizations have been forced to individually replenish the funds that they made from votes that violated their own bylaws. The largest I've seen an example of is one million dollars. Somebody had to financially pay back to an organization. I really hope that we in the future and that this organization follows its bylaws and because there are legal consequences for that. So not overly thrilled that there were reappointments made to this body without following their own bylaws, which were approved by this body as well. And I hope that in the future, we pay more attention to that and we follow the law and we follow the bylaws of this organization.
Correct. And that's why we've also, they were also required to do a report to the board on who donated to the fund and what the fund was used for, and that was supposed to be done on a yearly basis. So that's why we were asking, we're giving them till next month to make that report. And that they're going to have to cover the last two and a half years. Summer?
Yeah, I just, oh, first I just want to echo Clerk Segras's concern about the terms expiring. I mean, one of them expired and seemed like a while ago and it had time to come before the board and to come before the interview committee. But given that there is still a vacancy on the board, what are we doing to recruit someone to fill that position? Does that person have to work for the township? I know that a lot of the folks that are on the board do work for the township. And what are we doing to recruit somebody to fill that position?
No, they do not have to work for the township. And we will be advertising like we do with our other positions and the focus and on Facebook.
Thank you.
Then we can interview them then. Stephen?
Um, concerning the appointments in the past, I agree, that's weird and disturbing that they did not come to the board. Foundation itself relies on the organization that has the fund agreement to report who has been elected to the committee. So I'm not sure if there was some report that came from the township to say these are now our members. So it would be good to find out how that happened in the past few years.
Um, you mean, I'm sorry, could you clarify that you're saying that it shouldn't come before us in terms of?
Right, the, depending on how the fund agreement was written, I don't have that in front of me. Maybe it's in one of these attachments. I don't think so. No, there's no attachments. But there's a fund agreement between the foundation and the body that is creating the fund itself. Specifically, the people on the committee. And it's up to them to report to the foundation who is on their committee. And it could be that in the fund agreement, it does say that they will get the appointments approved by the board of trustees. And if it does in the fund agreement, then this committee should have put it forth to the board of trustees each of those years to fill these spots.
Absolutely.
I don't, I also don't know if it says that the supervisor will be involved because it says in here something about filling vacancies that the supervisor can do that, not the board. So you might want to take a look at the fund agreement itself to see what was written in it. The foundation basically will talk, you know, communicate with whoever's the chair of this committee and say, have you elected new members and give us their names so we have them. But the foundation doesn't actually run the election of the committee. So that's in the fund agreement.
Right, and actually, they were supposed to, it does say, like, you're right, we read over the bylaws and it did say that the supervisor could make appointments when someone dropped off. But it was still supposed to come before even the board of trustees, us, the Canton.
Obviously, that didn't happen.
Correct, it did not happen.
Yeah.
Madam Supervisor, can I just ask one more question about the financial reporting that you mentioned? I'm trying to remember, and I don't remember them doing a financial report to the board. Have they done a financial report? Because it seems like if they had to do it yearly, it should have been done in eighteen, nineteen, and in twenty. So when they make the report next month, are they going to go back towards the inception of the fund?
Yes, they've been asked to do that, correct. They did not, Amy did look through the past RBAs. And because I couldn't remember a report being made and she went and looked and she says, she didn't see any either. So and as you're remembering is right, a report was not made and it should have been.
This is a nonprofit, they file on A nine ninety, do we know, annually?
The nonprofit is the Canton Community Foundation.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so they manage the fund on behalf of this. So this is, this will be part of the Canton Community Foundation's nine ninety. So the Canton Community Foundation will track the things that they're spending their money on, making sure that they are appropriate things to spend money on based on the fund agreement or what you were thinking of as bylaws are really called the fund agreement because they're not charity themselves, the foundation is. And then they'll report and make sure also that those things are legal for them to spend the money on. It's up to this group, based on the fund agreement, if it was in there, to report to the board as to what they spent their money on.
Diane?
I just want to make a quick comment that this was just brought to our attention. You know, I didn't know anything about this fund agreement, so.
Well, we approved it as a board four years ago, but in two thousand seventeen to create it. But that's the last that the board has heard about it, yeah.
Right, I just want the residents to know that.
Correct. Tanya?
I have a couple of questions. So it seems that Jessica Bunjek, her appointment was till two thousand eighteen. So was she serving after that or has the post remained vacant?
No, she stayed on and now she's stating that she wants to have it passed on. So she was in the.
So she was there and like all these people were there as we talked about that without being, coming in front of the board. The next question was, is this the, the board that, the five people that are there, are they the one who are making the financial decisions? Or is it also with it's a nonprofit, is it also with, because it's working with the township? Is any, are any of the township officials involved with this board? Like, do they work with the board?
No, the people that are on the committee made the decisions, the financial decisions based on the basically what the fund was supposed to be for. They did deny some things and they approved others. And that's what we're asking for a complete report on. Supposedly, there was something that was sent via email from the Canton Community Foundation to the supervisor, the previous supervisor, but I have not seen that. And that's why we're asking for a full accounting.
Thank you.
Michael?
Two of the committee members are township employees. So that is important to know. There is, you know, it's not like a completely separate group, but
Right.
You know, I will just reiterate. The creation of this organization, of this fund, was to benefit the township in some ways. And what we landed, what this board, or the previous board voted to do was to lend the credibility of the township's name to this organization that they use to fundraise with. And so, yeah, I mean, I'll be looking forward to a financial report on what that money was spent on. And then I would also look forward to an annual report because there, there has to be a level of oversight. If we've given this group or somebody, you know, the, the ability to fundraise and to spend money supporting us, which is great, that's fantastic. I mean, if that's what the money's being spent on, I don't know. Right? And if, and if that's not the case, you know, at some point, we've got to, you know, if we can't have transparency and accountability around, around this money. Do, do we know how much money is currently in the fund?
Approximately thirty-six thousand dollars, I've been told.
Thirty-six thousand dollars. That this body currently does not know where it came from, does not know how much this fund has raised over the last few years. And does not have any idea what that, what, what the excess funds were spent on. That's that's something. I don't know, I don't know what that is, but that's, that's not something I'm interested in participating in in the future. So if we put some boundaries and some constraints on this, that would be fantastic. Otherwise, we might need to have a conversation about the validity of this fund going forward.
Okay, I have one more, one more question.
I ask a question.
Oh, sir, go ahead.
Sorry, I've been waiting a little bit. But going back to the question about the nine ninety, and I understand that probably under the umbrella of the Canton Community Foundation, but having been on the board of several nonprofits before, I'm also wondering we need to make sure that they've been doing their nonprofit updates with the state as well. So that is something we need to check into because every year nonprofits are required to provide an update to the state with who their officers are or their directors.
And Stephen, that would have been done through the foundation, correct?
Oh, yeah. And we have an audit every year on everything that we do, that the foundation does, me as an officer of that. And this is one of the. And this is one of the funds of the foundation, so this would be included. In that, I don't know what it entails, whether every fund, fund agreement committee, every fund holder and fund holder committee has to be reported to the state, or is it just the foundation's board of directors?
We should check into that because I've been on the board of nonprofits that were under an umbrella organization that also they still had to report to the state. So it'll depend on probably the bylaws, but.
Yeah, because this is not, this, yeah, this is not anything but a fund of the Canton Community Foundation. So it's not a full-fledged organization with its own five oh one C three or anything like that.
Right, right. No, understood.
Yeah. And, yeah, and we can do that. Probably, Madam Supervisor, you should also have Beth Mead come to the presentation when you do it, just so she can provide supporting information like that, even Dorit Shabattis, the CFO of the Canton Keating Foundation.
Okay, okay, thank you. Summer, you have something?
Just a question. And I, I don't remember the bylaws of the Canton Cares Fund. Does the supervisor act as chair of the fund?
No, the chair, the chair is not the supervisor's. As a matter of fact, the supervisor is supposed to be arms length from it.
Yeah, the reason I asked, because I know that a number of the, the board members are employees. So just want to make sure that there isn't some differential in, in power as decisions are made. So that makes me happy.
Right, and we might even think about suggesting having a board member sit on the committee. You might not be able to vote on it, but at least have oversight. Maybe that's something we might want to consider. I don't know if that might be you, Stephen, if you're thinking, just thinking about this because.
And, and maybe that fifth member should not be an employee when we go through the process of appointing the fifth member as well. I, I don't remember the discussions four, four years ago about employees and not employees being able to be on it, but it was something that the Michigan Foundation Organization, Supporting Organization has outlined processes for creating such a fund that were followed.
Right, there's nothing in here that says that an employee cannot be on it, just to let you know. Michael?
So, at, at some point, so we're talking about reappointing four individuals to this body that wasn't following the agreement that we initially set up, that wasn't reporting to this body their financial situation. That's a hard thing for me to vote in favor of. I gotta be quite frankly. Did they have any explanation? At all? And what weighs your recommendation to bring all of these people back before us, given that they weren't meeting the kind of the commitment that was that was voted on, I believe, right? We, we voted on that agreement, I think, this board. So they, they didn't meet up their end of it, and I'm just curious why we would reappoint. We reappoint them. Was it an accident? Were they instructed not to? I'm just curious.
I think in terms of the people that, you know, are being reappointed, Laura Martyr, I don't think they, they knew that. I think they relied on the, I mean, based on the investigation that I've been doing with us, I believe they relied on the chair and actually the previous supervisor to give direction. When I asked about where they got the list for who to reappoint, I was told that they were handed a list by the previous supervisor as to who to reappoint. These people fell off that, which was a little bit eye-opening. I, we basically said, you need to throw away the list. This is not how we do things. So in terms of reappointing, I think Laura, I, I just don't, I think, I don't think that they knew. I mean, I think they were given direction by the previous supervisor and they followed that without really paying attention. I really believe that.
So, okay, I'm gonna cut off that line of questioning now, based on what you just said. I will withdraw my concern about these individuals being reappointed. But I will instruct you to please communicate to them that we will be following this document going forward. I would ask that you be very sober in how you interact with any of these organizations going forward. And I think it's important for we, us as an organization to talk about where legal authority rests as a body with the Board of Trustees as opposed to the office of the supervisor. And if the supervisor at any point in time, or if anybody is ever asked at any point in time to do something that is extra legal or does not meet the initial agreement that was board-approved, I would hope that any employee of the township or any representative on a board would, would stick to both A, the letter of the law, and B, the black and white terms of an agreement that was board-approved. Because as a culture, I don't think that, that's not appropriate for that office to have that much weight. So I'll just cut it off then. I'm sorry. I'm okay with the appointments then.
I think the appointments are fine. Any other, but you're right, this, this office will not, is to stay arms-length away from the fund. Does the board want to add a board member as an oversight to the committee?
Do that at a later time.
Yeah, I'd like to take a look at the bylaws. Can you send the bylaws out to us so that we can read them before we have the financial presentation?
Yes, okay.
Or, and I would also ask that you talk to Beth Mead too, because one, I don't know the legality of changing the terms of that agreement. Two, I don't understand the philosophy around should a representative from the township be on this body? Should they not be on this, on this body? Is it us? Is it not us? Is it a slush fund for an office or not? That's something that I think is a pretty deep, it's a deep conversation. It is clear, like, yeah.
I remember our discussions four years ago about there being very tight not restrictions, but things that you could spend the money on. And of course, we don't know, because we haven't seen it, whether that's what they did, which would be good, just when we talk to them to find out. But you can't just spend it on anything.
I, I will tell you that Canton Cares Fund helped with our scholarship. We had a scholarship for people who worked on the election students. Both August and November election and wrote an essay, were able to receive a scholarship for educational purposes. First place was seven hundred and fifty dollars, second place was five hundred dollars. So it's done some meaningful work. I don't want to malign this, this group. I just want accountability around it.
And it, in the past, has supported the, the events, the award events for public safety.
Oh, yeah.
The, those events.
And they fed the front lines. And I do think I met with the ladies on there, and I think they're, they're a very good group, and they really want to do good. I think they all are very well-meaning.
Yeah, I think that impetus for starting the Cares Fund, if I remember correctly, it was, it was good. And so just want to make sure that they are following their own rules that they outlined.
Right. Correct. Tanya?
Yeah, so I am, as for the discussion that has been going on, and as a new member of the board, I am okay with the appointment, reappointments, but I definitely would like to see. And, and I also believe that any of the, you know, the supervisor's office or any of the employees who are not on, on this board, the Canton Cares Fund should be at arms-length. And based on the bylaws, we make a decision whether we have a board member there or not. But I, in the future, I would like to see more transparency. I would like to see, you know, a yearly report on where, everything, what is going on with this fund. And, you know, these appointments, it's, it's really, I feel it's a little bit irregular, but as a new board, we, and these people, I have seen these people working and raising funds as part of the Canton Community Foundation, so I'm okay with the appointments. But I would like to see more transparency in the future.
Thank you, noted, thank you. Any other questions, Michael?
Or is it, I saw Greg raise his hand, but is it possible to make this more formal, like, like a standard committee we have that goes through the exact same process, appointments from the office of the supervisor, approval from the board, review by the, by the, the committee that was set up that reviews applications. And then when there is a vacancy, we do a call out to the community to see if anyone's interested. And then we get all those applicants that will apply to you. And you guys sift through them and present them to us. To me, that feels like, feels safer than, you know.
Right. You might have to amend a little bit of the bylaws, but Amy did tell them that's how we were going to move forward.
Oh, cool.
Yeah. Any other questions? Greg?
I'm completely not involved with this fund, but I am involved preferably with a couple other funds with the Community Foundation and just for knowledge, when a committee wants to spend money, it has to be in line with the bylaws to have the foundation write a check for anything. So again, I don't know exactly what those funds were spent on, but I do know that there are some checks and balances built into the Canton Community Foundation that this committee would have to present to the Community Foundation a qualifying expense.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you. Clerk Seagris, can you please take a roll call on the motion?
Kornenski?
Hi.
Foster?
Hi.
Ganguly?
Hi.
Graham Hudek?
Hi.
Seagris?
I.
Slavens?
Hi.
Snyderman?
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes. Our next item, G three, request budget amendments to the two thousand twenty-one capital improvement plan, and this is the item that was revised. May I have a motion, please?
Let me get it up and running here, sorry. Madam Supervisor? Sorry, my PD, I'm on VPN, my PDF crashed. I'm getting it up here again. I've got the upgrade. The updated.
If you want.
If you want to, but I've already got it. Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the attached budget amendments required for the two thousand twenty-one CIP bond projects. And that's the updated list that was emailed to everybody two hours ago.
For, all right. Thank you. In two thousand nineteen, the Township Board approved a five-year capital improvement plan for just under thirty million in capital projects to be completed throughout two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-three. The township originally planned to spend approximately fourteen point nine million in two thousand twenty and six point two million in two thousand twenty-one. However, due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, project construction and progress, progress was delayed. After putting all CIP projects on hold for a large portion of two thousand twenty, we are ready to proceed again. As a result, various budget amendments are needed to move project budgets originally planned for two thousand twenty into two thousand twenty-one. Director Trumbull, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I just want to apologize for the last minute revision to the RBA. Earlier in January, when the board had approved the ADA projects that were initially budgeted in two thousand twenty, that budget had already been moved over. So the original RBA that I had presented was including those again. So we took those out to make sure we weren't double counting the budget adjustments. So I apologize for that error. But again, this is for projects that we had already budgeted to do, initially budgeted to do in two thousand twenty, but because of COVID, we didn't get started. We issued all of the bonds. So the bond money's still sitting in fund balance. We're just moving the project budgets over so we can be in compliance with the Budget Act. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All right, great, thank you. Clerk Seagris, can you please take a roll call on the motion?
Kornenski?
Hi.
Foster?
Hi.
Ganguly?
Hi.
Graham Hudek?
Hi.
Seagris, I, Slavens?
Hi.
Snyderman?
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next item is item G four, request approval to pay employees for COVID expense relief.
Madam Supervisor, I move to the board approve a COVID expense relief bonus in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five dollars to all full-time and continuing part-time employees employed by the township as of February nine, two thousand twenty-one.
Support.
Thank you. Throughout the pandemic, more specifically in November, when the most recent township closures started, employees have been utilizing more technology than they have in the past. We have attempted to provide the technology needed to allow employees to work efficiently at home. However, some employees have requested additional technology to assist their needs, while others have purchased or had the additional technology available to them. In an effort to help employees purchase needed supplies or technology to help them work efficiently, we are requesting the board approval, one-time COVID expense relief bonus in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five to all full-time and continuing part-time employed, employees employed at the township on this date. If approved, the total cost of the township for all employees to receive this bonus approximates fifty thousand dollars. Director Trumbull, would you like to say anything else on this?
Sure. Most notably, I know some of the questions that have come about from some of the employees are, most of our employees have dual monitors at work. However, employees are using their laptop to route, to log into their work computer. So they can't take, they can't take two monitors home with them to work on two monitors because they need their two monitors back at the office. Some people have bought monitors. Some people had a monitor. Some people, because they're doing Zoom meetings, need more headsets. And honestly, we've tried to provide some, but from a IT perspective, we don't want to get, you know, two hundred monitors back. That's just going to be sitting in a supply, supply room either. So we talked about a hundred dollars. The problem is with taxing a hundred dollar bonus, that automatically it gets taxed at, I think it's twenty-two percent of the federal rate. And then fight on top of that. So that was going to bring the bonus down to about a seventy dollars. So we said if we could bump it up to the hundred and twenty-five, that should net people around a hundred dollars to be able to get their technology, or reimburses them for the technology that they, that they already have. And that fifty thousand dollars would go to all employees, public safety, TPAM, non-union employees, asking, it goes to everybody. So that fifty thousand is spread amongst all of the, whatever the employee's budget is in, whatever budget they are paid out of, their one hundred and twenty-five dollars will go back to that fund. And we believe at this point in time, it can be absorbed into all the funds without a budget adjustment.
Yes, and adding to that, we're, right now, we're going to be working remotely to the end of March, and it doesn't mean that other employees won't continue to work remotely on and off, even after that. Okay, great. Does, are there any questions?
I just want to make a quick comment. I think it's a great idea. I know so many employees I've talked to already have had to purchase things at home. Another monitor headset, a chair, somebody was having back problems, so they had to get a chair. So I think this is a great idea to help our employees as a work-from-home.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I just want to thank, I know, I think Director Trumbull's idea initially, I think this is a pretty, it's pretty thoughtful. Communicates to the people who work for us, that we appreciate them, that we kind of acknowledge that, that what we're going through. So everything that Diane said was, was a hundred percent correct. And, and also, I think that it, it does a pretty good job of talking about our values as an organization, that we care about each other and, and that we, we know what people are struggling with, and we want to help them through it. So I really like this.
Anyone else? Hey, Clerk Seagris, can you please call, roll on the motion?
Kornenski?
Hi.
Foster?
Hi.
Ganguly?
Hi.
Graham Hudek?
Hi.
Seagris, I, Slavens?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item G five, consider approval of the purchase of vehicles for two thousand twenty-one and an associated amendment to the two thousand twenty-one fire budget.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of eight vehicles totaling two hundred nine, two thousand nine hundred and five dollars as depicted in the attached spreadsheet and to approve the, the attached budget amendment to the twenty, to the two thousand twenty-one fire budget.
Support.
Thank you. MSD Fleet Services evaluates all vehicles that meet the minimum replacement criteria each year and recommends replacements as part of the capital improvement process. This year, nine vehicles are budgeted for replacement and to meet services needs of the various users. The On Street Vehicle Fleet has 190 total units. The Township will again utilize existing publicly bid government pricing contracts administered through Macomb County for all forward purchases. Units taken out of service will be rotated elsewhere in the fleet and/or be auctioned off using our entire auction site, Bidcorp.com for disposal. Vehicles that are proposed to be purchased have all been evaluated for alternative fueling sources, including electric. It should be noted that the Police Fund had budgeted six vehicles for replacement. However, are only purchasing five as they have opted for hybrid engine vehicles, which are more expensive than those originally budgeted. In addition, both state and federal grant opportunities were researched and it was found that the vehicles on the list for 2021 do not qualify at this time. The total value of the purchase for 2021 is $292,905 and each unit has adequate funds budgeted in the respective department budgets. Director Smith, do you have anything to add?
No, just to bring, to raise attention in regards to why the number was budgeted at nine and we're only doing eight is because of the hybrid vehicles that we're going to be putting in the Police Department Fleet. Um, and moving forward with that new direction and looking at alternative vehicles, we'll be looking at that during the budget time in the previous year, moving forward.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Steven?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Um, and I think it's great that we're looking at alternative energy vehicles. The question I have is, um, does this, I know chat isn't here this evening, but does this impact, anything for the police that they're not getting that sixth unit?
I don't believe so. I can't really, I don't want to speak for Director Ball. However, no, he was in the conversations with our fleet manager in regards to these purchases. So he's, he's aware and I think if it was probably would have negatively impacted him, he'd probably come before to get a budget amendment. So I'm assuming that, uh, he's okay. It looks like, it looks like Wendy.
I actually did have a direct conversation with him specifically about that when I was looking at the RBA because I saw that there were six budgeted and we were only purchasing five. And I asked him if that was going to create a problem and he specifically said he didn't, he didn't think it was. They had had the conversation with Clark and that they thought they could, um, live without the, the sixth vehicle, at least as of this point. And if they need it later, they'll come back to the Board at a later date.
Um, my follow-on to that, probably for you, Director Trumbull, is, is there a way that an analysis of the cost savings of going electric could be used for purchasing a sixth vehicle if they needed it? Or?
A cost savings for the, compared to the gas?
Yeah.
Um, you know, there probably would be a way to do that. This would be our first vehicle that we'd be purchasing. So I know police use their vehicles a little bit differently than the common.
Sure.
Um, you know, driver would. So there's probably some statistics out there for departments that have gone this direction. So we can, you know, Jade and I can work together probably with Fleet to try to come up with some of those numbers and bring those to the Board.
Are these, sorry, Ford vehicles?
What's that? I believe they are Ford vehicles.
Just to let you know, they do have those calculations, Board does. So. I know.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, if he needs it, I mean, I, I, of course, there's the environmental aspect of doing this, which is great. But there should be also, I think, a cost savings and maybe some of that money could be put towards a sixth vehicle. I don't know that it would cover a full since vehicle, but that'd be great.
I, I'm fairly confident we can pull that together too, because I know Clark keeps really good records of what our current maintenance schedule is and the, the costs. And then we could look at the, the industry standards for what we're purchasing and do a comparison.
Sure.
Yeah.
Just a thought.
Yeah, they have that published. Thank you, Tanya. Tanya?
So, um, I understand municipal services did, uh, and now does this analysis and about the vehicles. And how often do these, um, how often are these purchases made? Is this every year or, uh, every couple of years?
Yeah. So there's a, there's a fleet recommendation that's brought before the Board every year with the budget. And it varies every year depending on which type of equipment is, uh, is needed. And that is spearheaded between the departments that utilize the vehicles and the fleet supervisor.
And so for, you know, in the coming years, are you planning, are you going to have a plan for, you know, fully moving to alternative energy vehicles?
Yes. Yes, that's something that I've had active conversations with the supervisor about. And we're analyzing the fleet as we move forward and putting together what that will look like in the future. And for instance, this, this RBA looks different than it has in previous years because now we're going to start addressing if it does qualify for any sort of grants. And then if it does qualify for any sort of alternative vehicles and why or why not that vehicle's being replaced with or without.
Yeah, that would have been my next question about, you know, getting some sort of a credit or grant or something. But I think this is a great idea.
Yeah.
Slowly move towards alternative energy vehicles in our fleet. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, great. Thank you. Clark Segras, can we please have a roll call on the motion?
Kornenski. Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Segras, I Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item G6, consider approval of a contract extension with Hydro Corp, Incorporated to continue Canton's commercial cross-connection control program. Who can say that?
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the professional services contract with Hydro Corp, Incorporated to provide management services and inspection for the Township's commercial cross-connection control program for an amount of $35,040 per year, subject to approval of contract, of contract by Township Attorney.
Support.
Thank you. The Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, EGLA, requires municipalities provide for a few, a safe water supply system through an effective cross-connection control program. EGLA requires municipalities to inspect commercial and industrial properties and submit annual reports for their programs. Since 2006, Canton has contracted the Industrial Commercial Cross-Connection Control Program with City of Troy-based Hydro Corp, Incorporated. They have upheld their contractual obligations and achieved the goals expected of the requested services. An extensive calculation of the required services has been performed and it has been found the best option is to have Hydro Corp perform these services and extend the contract three years. There are only two companies that perform this type of work through the state and Hydro Corp performs work in southeast Michigan. In addition, Hydro Corp also performs the Township's residential program. The three-year proposal for the required services is in the amount of $35,040 annually or $2,920 monthly. Director Smith, do you have anything to add?
Um, just to mention that the, that Hydro Corp does do the residential program that was just introduced last year. So they do have that, that piece of work they do for us as well. And before I got here, they had done an analysis to see if this is something that could be done in-house. And it is much more equitable to, to take it out to a company that actually performs this for us.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Nate?
Well, just a, a comment that, um, as we, as you said, Anne Marie, this is, um, extending the contract for three years. And so the total over the three years is $105,120. Just wanted to, um, clarify that for the public that it's actually $105,120 over three years.
Oh, you're right. Yeah. $35,040 annually. Right. Okay. Any other questions? Great. Thank you. Clark Segras, can you please take a roll call on the motion?
Kornenski.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Segras, I Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Motion passes. Item G7, consider authorization of a purchase order to Fishback Incorporated professional engineering services for the 2021 road improvement program.
Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order contract for the 2021 major road construction projects to Fishback Incorporated in the amount of $126,033 and to approve the attached budget amendment.
Support.
Thank you. On October 22nd, 2019, the Township Board authorized the extension of our contract with Fishback Incorporated for the 2020 and 2021 projects. Following projects have been authorized for 2021. Canton Center, Cherry Hill de Ford, Hagerty, US 12 to Van Born and Sheldon, Cherry Hill de Ford. The scope of work for these projects has been reviewed with Wayne County and detailed engineering design can now be completed. Director Smith, do you want to add anything?
I don't, I don't have much more to add to this, other than this is for the design and the construction, engineering. And after that, this will go out to bid and we, we will be back before you, um, when the bids come back in to actually award the projects for construction.
All right, thank you. Any questions? We did go over the roads project program last week. No questions? Great. Thank you. Clark Segras, can you please take a roll call on the motion?
Kornenski.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Segras, I Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item G8, consider approval of an extension of the contract with Rotundo Construction Corporation for the 2021 sidewalk repair program.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve an extension of the contract with Rotundo Construction Corporation for the completion of the 2020 sidewalk repair program and the 2021 sidewalk repair program in the amount of $885,000.
Support.
Thank you. In January 2017, Canton Township publicly bid the annual sidewalk repair program, which includes work in subdivisions on the primary roads, the sidewalk gaps and incident flatwork on township property. Board awarded a contract to Rotundo Construction Corporation for the 2017 program and has extended their contract based on satisfactory performance and stable prices. The coronavirus pandemic caused a late start in the 2020 sidewalk program, which prohibited the contractor to complete all the scheduled repairs. The contractor will be back in the spring of 2021 to complete the repairs in Zone 5. There are three subdivisions, Glengarry North and Glengarry Village 1 and 2, in which we're, which a water main project took place in 2020. The contractor agreed to hold his concrete prices to include with the repairs in the spring. The contractor displayed satisfactory performance and is requesting a change in the unit cost only in concrete pricing for the 2021 program located in Zone 6. Their supplier has increased the cost of concrete at $8 per cubic yard. Engineering Services requests to extend the contract with Rotundo for 2021. Director Smith, do you have anything to add?
I don't, unless there's any questions.
Any questions? Great. Thank you. Clark Segras, can you please take a roll call on the motion?
Kornenski.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Segras, I Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Motion passes. Item G9, consider approving the purchase of a key card access system for fire station three.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of a key card access system for fire station number three from Interstate Security Incorporated in the amount of $20,000 utilizing funds budgeted in the 2021 fire capital outlay of buildings account.
Support.
Thank you. The Fire Department is requesting to purchase a key card access system for fire station number three. The system will tie into the card reader systems currently installed throughout, including all public safety buildings. Interstate Security Incorporated, the Township's contracted vendor for this card access system, has quoted $20,000 for purchase and installation. Director Stockline, do you have anything to add?
I would just say that, um, this is, uh, going to finish up all of our facilities. We have at Station 1 currently, uh, the new building, Station 2 is having it installed as well. And this is the final station to get that, protects our personnel. As you know, we had a, a person come into the fire station out there, Station 3, in the middle of the night, the one night, and spend the night in the bay. So that will protect our personnel and it also protects our, um, our equipment and our medications that we store on those vehicles as well. So, um, it's the, it's the right time to do it. And it's the, um, you know, with the way everything is setting, we want to make sure that we're protecting our assets and our, and our employees.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right, Clark Segras, can you please take roll call on the motion?
Kornenski.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Segras, I Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Thank you. Item G10, appointments to the Commission for Culture, Arts and Heritage.
All right. And this is in the form of two motions, Madam Supervisor. Madam Supervisor, I move that the Board of Trustees, the Charter of Canton, approve the appointments of Hussein Hydray, Neha Rah, Jason Davis and Cornelius Van Bronson to the Commission for Culture, Arts and Heritage for, for three-year terms to expire December 31, 2024.
Support.
Thank you. The Boards and Commissions interview panel, along with the Chair and Vice Chair of the Cultural Commission, is recommending the appointments of Hussein Hydray, Neha Rah, Jason Davis and Cornelius Van Bronson. For its bylaws, the Commission has also designated one physician on its Board as a Canton Board of Trustees representative. Ms. Tanya Ganguly will fill this vacant position and serve as a designated Township Board Representative. Are there any questions? Steven?
Um, yeah, uh, just to comment. And first, I want to thank the, um, the Commission. They allowed us, this is really their process, I think, by the bylaws that they choose and just recommend to us. But they allowed our little committee of Anne Marie, Summer and myself to listen in on all the interviews. And as usual, we have really great talent here in Canton. So we did have to narrow it down and I think we have some great new appointees, um, going on to the Commission. And, uh, they're going to do a great job for, for us. I'm not sure about that Tanya lady. I'm not sure about her. But, but everyone else I thought was, was really great. Now, Tanya, you'll do a great job on there as well.
Great. Thank you. Yes, it was a lot, a lot of great, interesting people that want to do. Summer?
Oh, I just wanted to mention that, um, we did have really great people. And for the folks that were not chosen, um, to be on the Commission at this time, I hope that they will apply to sit on some of the other boards and commissions that we have. The people that are applying for these boards and commissions are really impressive and they have a lot of great ideas for Canton Township. And so sitting in on these interviews makes me really excited about Canton's future.
So thank you. Tanya?
Yeah, I have, um, I look, uh, I saw the appointments and I'm very excited. Already had a conversation with the, um, current Chair, Summer. Uh, and I am looking forward to my first meeting with the Commission this Thursday.
Thank you. Tanya, Kate?
So, um, this is two separate motions, right? And so right now we're doing the first one from, and then the, the one with appointing Tanya is the second.
Yes.
Just making sure that we know what we're doing.
We look like we know what we're doing. Anyone else? Okay, Clark Segras, can you please call, roll call on the first motion?
Kornenski.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Segras, I Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
That first motion passes. Um, can I please have a mo, the second motion read?
Madam Supervisor, I move to the. Ma'am Supervisor, I move to that the Board of Trustees approved the appointment of Tanya Ganguly as the Canton Board of Trustees representative to the Canton Commission for Culture, Arts and Heritage.
Support.
Thank you. Are there any questions on the second motion? Clerk Segras, please call a roll on the second motion.
Orninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
And I wrote on this?
You can.
I.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Segrestai Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Great, thank you. Motion passes. Congratulations. Item G eleven. Consider a warning contract and approve a purchase order for indoor track surface replacement at Summit in the Park.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to award the contract and approve a purchase order for the indoor track surface replacement at Summit on the Park to Foster specialty floor at three zero six eight one Wicksum Road, P O Box nine three zero three eight two Wicksum, Michigan four eight three nine three in the amount of twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty with funds to be paid from the account number listed, capital improvement plan.
Support.
Thank you. On January seventh, two thousand twenty-one, three proposals were returned for the indoor track surface replacement at Summit on the Park. A panel of leisure services and finance staff interviewed and scored the three companies based on set criteria detailed in the request for proposal. At your careful evaluation, we are recommending Foster's specialty floor for the indoor track surface replacement at Summit on the Park in the amount of twenty-five thousand four hundred dollars with a ten percent contingency of two thousand five hundred and forty for a total project cost of twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. Director Homberg, do you want to add anything?
Nothing further unless there's any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All right, thank you. Tanya?
Yeah, I have a quick question. So the next, there are a couple of similar items about Summit on the Park. So are these part of the, you know, you do a renovation every year? There's a shutdown that happens at Summit and so are these part of the yearly renovation?
No, these are part of the C I P program.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, just say usually we get the bid evaluation. I don't, I, I don't need to see it to vote right now. I mean, you guys do your evaluation based on criteria, but I didn't see.
Was that in the packet, Greg? So you're new.
All right, does not appear to be included in this packet. I'll be sure to.
Yeah, we'll include.
Forward it afterwards, no big deal.
Any other questions? Great, Clerk Segras, can you please call roll on the motion?
Orninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Segrestai Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Thank you. Item G twelve. Consider awarding contract and approve a purchase order for locker replacement at Summit on the Park.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to award the contract and approve a purchase order for the locker replacement at Summit on the Park to Carpentry Concepts and Ceilings LLC at one eight seven eight six Susanna in Livonia, Michigan four eight one five two in the amount of seventy-five thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars with funds to be paid from the account number listed for capital improvement plan.
Support.
Thank you. On January seventh, two thousand twenty-one, two proposals were returned for the locker replacement at Summit on the Park. The panel of leisure services and finance staff interviewed and scored both companies based on set criteria detailed in the request for proposal. After careful exam, evaluation, we are recommending Carpentry Concepts and Ceilings for the locker replacement at Summit on the Park for proposed amount of seventy thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars and to include an additional contingency of five thousand dollars to be used as needed within the budgeted amount for a total project cost of seventy-five thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars. Director Homberg, do you have anything to add to this one?
No, nothing further.
Kate?
Thanks. So the same request for this one that trustee Snyderman had for the previous one. And then also I'm wondering, are there only two vendors in the area or do you have any insight as to why we only got two bids?
I don't. I know from our previous locker replacement that that's kind of a specialized product that they have to get and so it just may have been. Nobody else was there. I really can't tell you why no, we only had two bids.
Okay.
Greg, do you, is this like for like? Is it the similar type of?
These are going to be, these lockers will be similar or basically the exact ones that we have in the Aquatics Center locker room. So it's a more of a plastic type of locker, rigid plastic, so that there's no corrosion or rust or anything. Is kind of throughout the materials. If they get scratched or anything, then you don't have any painting or.
So they're metal now? Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, Clerk Segras, can you take a roll call on the motion, please?
Orninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Segrestai.
Great, motion passes. Okay, the next on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any additional public comment now that we've come onto the agenda? I don't see any hands raised. Are there any comments from our directors online? No, I know that a couple of things I know, we're looking at a station opening. Chris, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I was going to say that we, I had some more conversation with the contractors today, so we're still shooting for that February twenty-second date. And, you know, we're not sure that we're going to hit that for sure, but I had asked the supervisor to get ahold of all the board members to see when we could get you out for ribbon cutting. So we know it'll be within a few, few days of that twenty-second, February twenty-second. So we're excited to get that, that station opened and get the firefighters moved over there. The beds and the furniture, everything's coming in now and it's starting to look really sharp over there. And I know that it's just a matter of time that gets you guys in there and get the public in there to take a look at it. So we can see exactly all the hard work and the progress that's been made over the last year, actually five years on this whole project. But needless to say, we know that it's going to really improve our, our status on response times in that area and it's going to make a big difference. So looking forward to that. And also on the COVID front, I know that we've been working very hard with the county to try and get those vaccinations over here to the summit. We've been working hard with Greg and his team to facilitate those vaccinations and kind of in the county's hands at this point to get those vaccinations. Once they get enough vaccinations, they've, you know, told the supervisor that they plan on distributing through Canton Township as well. So we'll keep you updated on that. So that's really it from the fire department side and appreciate your continued support. We know we always bring a lot of, a lot of things towards you. All directors always bring a lot of things towards you, so we all appreciate your support and always backing ourselves.
Thank you. And like you said, we're trying to figure out how we can get some seniors vaccinated and do what's right for our residents. Thank you. Also to add under our Canton Cable, Treasurer Slavens and Clerk Segras and I were over at the studios today and we had a city of tailor visiting us because they're opening up their new facility of cable and they wanted to see how our award-winning Canton team did it. So they spent the day there learning about, you know, our cable station and how we do such a great job. So good job on that. They seemed pretty excited when they were there. Also Wendy, do you want to tell them about the financial award that we got?
Sure. We just received our notification that we received our certificate of achievement. It's a long word, a lot of words, excellent and excellent financial reporting or whatever, really long. We did good. That's the end of the day. We received our award again on our audit. It was the twentieth year in a row, so we're pretty proud of that. We usually would have had it before now because of COVID, all the reviews were backlog. So we did receive that. So that was really good news for financial, for our finance department who works really hard on it.
Great job.
Thank you.
Does anyone have anything else? Diane?
Just a quick reminder, taxes are due February sixteenth. You know, I've noticed lately residents, when they put their bills in the drop box, they're putting a stamp on it. You don't need to put a stamp because it goes directly into our vault. So you don't need to put a stamp, just put it in the envelope and no need for a stamp. Save your stamps. And then we are going to be open for cash payments only on February sixteenth from ten in the morning to two in the afternoon for residents who are paying cash for their taxes. We will be open on Tuesday the sixteenth.
Thank you.
Ma'am Treasurer, I paid mine online for the first time. It was very easy.
Good.
Yay.
Summer?
This went out in the February focus, but I just wanted to remind people that there's openings on the Building Board of Appeals, the Historic District Commission, and we're looking for a business representative for the DDA. So somebody that has a business in the DDA district, we're looking for those. There's openings there. So if you are interested, go online and apply, please.
Good reminder. Thank you. Clerk Segras?
One, I want to applaud yourself, ma'am supervisor. I know you pulled together a committee that to discuss equity in the township and put out a Black History Month newsletter that was a pleasant surprise. I appreciated that. Excellent little historical article posing some, some pretty potent questions about narratives we tell ourselves about America's founding that I thought was pretty exciting too. So I wanted to thank you for that. And it's exciting and good to see that we're pushing ourselves to try to fully represent our very diverse community.
Thank you.
That was one. Two, I've had two new people in my office who are now accredited election officials by the Bureau of Elections. And one thing we do here in Canton Township that you don't see that I know of in any other clerk's office is every employee who is a sworn election assistant is also an accredited election official. And that's the certification that clerks and deputy clerks go through. So everybody from my continuing part-time person, somebody who works twenty hours a week has the same training, the same base training as a, as a certified clerk in another community. And that's something that we've done to try to create proficiency inside the office. So I'm very proud of those two for closing the loop on us, on that with us and getting us to a place where we've got everybody set with that. So that's, that's pretty exciting. And I want to celebrate that with my staff. They're great. And then last week I went and did the audit, helped out on the audit over in Livonia. And the Bureau of Elections came in and we looked at their absentee counting boards. And it was a pretty good, pretty, pretty cool to see in other community and their, their methods and their madness and go through all that stuff and balance it out. And it looked, looked pretty good. It's good to see, especially at a time when, when there's some concern over, over the elections, for some folks anyway. It was good to see pretty good procedures and pretty explainable discrepancies when they did exist.
Oh, thank you. All good, good things to bring up. Also, we had a large water main break. I'm sure some residents know last Friday. And our municipal services team took care of that real quickly, went to the, everybody's homes and let them know. So it was a very cold day to be playing in the water, but they did get it taken care of quickly. I don't know if you wanted to say anything about that, Jade? Is that everything all, do they have to go back for any more repairs?
No, they'll have to do some remediation probably in the spring because you just don't do some of that remediation in the road and depending on where it was located at exactly. I know the crews did a great job. They got the water main call about one o'clock in the afternoon. And then they had it buttoned up by five o'clock. And then I actually think they went straight from there and assisted with the fire to some capacity. So MSDDPW specifically was pretty busy on Friday afternoon into the evening.
Thank you. Yeah, and we had a fire on Friday, which I think, of course, we put out pretty quickly.
Yeah, fortunately, we, we got the calls quickly and we were able to extremely keep it to the garage and not get into the house. Though, and like Jade said, you know, DPW came out to spread salt because these are horrible conditions to fight fire in these cold weather. So had to get the salt down there to stop it from becoming the ice rink. So, but yeah. Good, good job on all the crews and appreciate all the, the help from the other departments as well.
Yeah, thank you. And our police chief isn't here, but we had some pretty hairy conditions over the weekends, which they took care of and everybody was safe. Nobody got hurt. So that's good. Thank you. All right, thanks, everybody. Anything else? Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I have a quick question on Summer's comment about the Historic Commission. Is, can anyone apply?
Yes, anyone can apply. And they look for someone, they look for people that have an interest or a background in architecture or in history or planning, archaeology, urban planning, American studies, American civilization, geography, anthropology, but anyone can apply. And.
See if anyone is in the community and would like to apply for this position.
Yeah, I think they have the, the things that they're looking for on the website, but those are just things that they're looking for. They, anyone can apply and, and serve, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Supported, thank you. Clerk Segras, can you please take a roll on the motion?
Yes. Orninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Segrestai Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
And I.
Great, thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
You too.